Hi, good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a core of our board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Openset Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time, if you'll please rise for our pledge and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing. With us tonight, we have Joseph Abair from the First Baptist Church of Bastrop. We'll offer our opening prayer for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's pray together. Father, I want to thank you so much for all of the people who have gathered here this evening. Father, we want to pray for the students, for the faculty, for the administrators, for everyone who assists and volunteers and supports our schools. Father, we pray that this coming school year that's underway, Father, we pray that this will be the best year yet for the Bastrop schools. Father, we pray that our students will grow in their knowledge of the world. We pray that they will grow in their wisdom and their understanding. We pray that you will help them to find mentors and those who can set examples for them. Father, we pray for the meeting this evening. We pray that you will give guidance to the trustees, that you will help them to make wise decisions, decisions that are in the best interests of our entire community. Father, we pray that you will give them the insight that they need, the understanding they need, and the wisdom they need to make these decisions. We pray all of this in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. All right. This time, we'll move to our student speaker on character education trait for September, which is honesty. Dr. Lee, would you please introduce our student speaker?
Absolutely. I would like to introduce you all to Brian Tenorio. He is a fifth grade student at Emile Elementary. He is a great example of what every student should embody. He is respectful, responsible, and always is willing to help out his classroom community. Brian strives to reach his goals and his ability to show kindness will surely make the world a better place. Brian, do you want to share with us your talk on honesty?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Honesty means acting truthfully, fairly, and consistently. That is being transparent in what you think, say, and do. An honest person doesn't cheat, doesn't steal, and keeps their commitments because they respect others and themselves. Examples of honesty in everyday life at school, admitting a mistake instead of blaming someone else. At home, telling the truth when you break something, even if you are afraid of being scolded. On the streets, returning a wallet you found lying around instead of keeping the money. Honesty means to me to say the truth always and admit our mistakes. La honestidad significa actuar con verdad, justificar. Y con... 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 Conferencia es decir... De... Decir, ser transparente en lo que pensa, piensa. Se dice y hace una persona en la que se piensa, que piensa. Se dice y cumple sus compromisos porque están a los demás y a sí mismo. Ejemplos de la honestidad en la vida diaria. En la escuela, entregar una tarea hecha pa... Para ti sin... Con... Con... Copiar de internet de un compañero en la... En el trabajo, reconocer un error en vez de culpar a otra persona. En la casa, decir la verdad cuando rompes algo aunque te den miedo ser regañado. En la calle, devolver una billetera en contrato, en contrates tirada en un lugar que... Que dar... Que darte el dinero. La honestidad significa para mí que todos digamos la verdad y admitir nuestros errores.
Brian, thank you for coming to talk to us about honesty. And that's awesome perseverance in getting through that speech you wrote. And that's really impressive. That's something I could not do. So that's really great. So, Dr. Lee?
Brian, who did you bring with you tonight to support you?
I brought my mom, my brother, and my two little sisters.
Yeah, would you guys like to stand up back there? Excellent. And I also see you have some teachers and your principal are here also to support you. That's nice to have people in your corner, isn't it? Yeah, you did a great job. Ms. Noli over here, she has something before you leave. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I also want to, in addition to recognizing Brian, I want to recognize we do have one student, two... Actually, I think we have two. Members of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We have both from Bastrop High School, Laney Coy and Kayden Justice. We just held our first meeting for the Superintendent Student Advisory Council for this school year. And so both councils have selected new students to invite to the council. So they will join us starting in October. So hopefully, we will see students from SSAC here at every board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Moving along to our recognitions and special presentations. We have Bullying Prevention Month presentation. And our presenters this evening are Hymena Saldaya Elias and Betsy Harria, the Family Crisis Center of Bastrop Youth Advisory Board. And please come forward and help maybe re-pronounce your last name for me.
My last name is Herrera. And my name is Jimena Saldana Elias.
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Betsy. I'm the BHS YAD president.
And my name is Jimena. I am the CIRCA YAD president.
And today, we're here to speak about two very important topics: bullying and domestic violence.
These are topics that we've heard about for a long time, but we need to keep speaking on as it is still an extremely present and relevant issue in our community today. Before we begin, let's define these topics. Bullying is defined as an action that takes place with the intent of harm, intimidate, or coerce someone. When we talk about bullying, we are never talking about two friends joking with each other or messing with each other without ill intent. We are talking about a person who is either physically, emotionally, or even in both ways harming another on purpose again and again. The Texas Education Code governs issues such as this within our schools. In it, there's a specific legal definition outlined of bullying and cyberbullying. This code is what schools must follow when determining whether or not bullying has occurred in the school environment. According to the National Center for Education Statistics in 2022, one out of every five, which is about 19.2% of students, report being bullied. In a multinational study across 83 countries, 30.5% of adolescents report being bullied. Bullying comes with serious consequences among bullied students. 28% report negative effects on their self-esteem, 20% on their schoolwork, 18% on relationships with family and friends, and 13% on physical health. We've seen the firsthand effects that bullying has on people, whether that be from the outside or within ourselves. As a elementary school mentor, I've seen the impacts of bullying in our students. I've witnessed the fear, anxiety, and feeling of isolation that bullying can cause. But I've also seen the resilience and strength of our students and the positive impact that kindness and support can have on their lives. I want to bring awareness to the fact that bullying is a real and persuasive issue in our schools. It is not just a childhood rite of passage or something that students have to toughen up about. Bullying can have serious and long-lasting effects on students' mental health, academic performance, and overall well-being. As a community, we need to acknowledge the complexity of bullying and work together to create a safe and supportive environment for all students. This includes providing resources and support for students who are bullied, as well as addressing the root cause of bullying behavior. I hope that by sharing my experiences and observations, I can help raise awareness about the importance of addressing bullying in our schools. By working together, we can create a more compassionate and inclusive community for all students. Now, we are going to talk about domestic violence. Domestic violence is defined as a pattern of abusive behavior in any personal relationship that allows one partner to gain or maintain power and control over the other. This can include various forms of abuse such as physical, emotional, economic, and sexual violence, as well as intimidation and coercion. For teens, the CDC reports that about 1 in 12 high school students experience physical or sexual dating violence, approximately 8 to 10%. Furthermore, over 70% of women and 60% of men who have experienced intimate partner violence report that the first instance occurred before the age of 25, with 1 in 4 women experiencing it before 18. The effects are devastating. Intimate partner violence is a major contributor to homicide and has severe long-term economic, physical, and mental health consequences. I firsthand met so many people with terrifying stories of domestic abuse. From a mother who had to endure daily beatings from her now ex-husband just so her children had food to eat. The daily abuse she endured without knowing the weight of the situation because it's what she had been exposed to as a kid. Until she was put in a cast and she realized that she had to leave. To so many young people below the age of 18 who are unaware of the signs of domestic abuse, whether it be because they've been exposed to it at home, the media, or because they just don't recognize the sign. People need to be taught the signs of domestic abuse and that there's a way out and people willing to help them. We need to spread awareness. This way, we can prevent and stop the suffering of so many young female and male students, or at the very least, make a genuine effort to. Stop it before it starts campaign is something that in the Youth Advisory Board we like to use, motto, if you will. The aid in the campaign's aim aims to demonstrate the correlation between these two topics. Both of these topics are very interconnected and often follow the other. For example, a victim of bullying may later become a bully. Both domestic violence and bullying come from a point of feeling the need for power and control. The month of October is Bullying Prevention and Domestic Violence Awareness Month, one of the busiest months of the year for us. The BISD Youth Advisory Board all around the county uses this month to highlight and bring awareness to things that many people don't speak about and think of as taboo topics. Some of you guys may be wondering, well, why are we here? Our goal for tonight is to bring awareness to how bullying and domestic violence come hand in hand. And it is our job as students and members of our community who have the power to enforce a change for the brighter future of the following generations. We thank you for your time.
Just a few questions, right? Thank you for bringing awareness to us this evening and to BISD. And we appreciate y'all's efforts. How many are on y'all's Youth Advisory Board, roughly?
The CIRCA Youth Advisory Board has roughly about 12 students.
At the BHS Youth Advisory Board, we're still trying to expand, but we have about four-ish members.
Well, awesome. Well, thanks again for the awareness and I encourage y'all to keep doing all these positive things.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to the Bastrop County Youth Summit 3.0. We have Gabriella Roach and Rue Deschene with the Bastrop County Youth Summit. Hello.
Thank you so much for having us. Again, my name is Gabrielle Roach. I'm the manager of narrative and communications for a local nonprofit here in Bastrop called the HEAL Alliance, H-E-A-L. And we're partnering with BISD to host a youth summit on October 14th at the Convention Center. And yes, 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 thank you all so much. So we're here to just, you know, kind of talk about that and give a little bit more information. And for those in the audience, if you've got high school students that may be interested, find us, get the QR code so we can spread some of that information. But this event is to bring together roughly 200 high school students throughout our county and have a day of empowerment, advocacy. And we're going to go over topics such as mental health, civic engagement, restorative practices, entrepreneurship. We will have art exhibitions, we will have music, we will have food. And it is an excuse absence. We would love to have your students come hang out with us that day and build our capacity of leaders in this community. I have with me an avid committee member for our youth summit. And also, some of the ladies that just spoke are on our committee. So so happy to have them here. But she's going to speak a little bit about how past youth summits have changed her life.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Rue. The youth summit has been a huge part of my life for like the past three to four years. I've been here since it started and kind of helped it become what it is today. And I'm going to say it has changed my life for the better. Before, I used to be a kid who actually was bullied a lot. I had no friends, nowhere to go. The kid who sat alone at the lunch table, who everyone avoided because it was like the plague or something. Oh my gosh. But because of the youth summit, I found family and community. I found people who look like me and I found a place to belong, a space to be who I am. And it's really magical getting to see all the new kids who come in each and every year terrified and shy and then leaving with like a group of friends who can sometimes be lifelong. It's honestly amazing what we can do. And I hope everyone can take some time and come out and see the magic we create.
Yes. And a very, very special thank you to Priscilla. She is a driving force of this youth summit and we're so happy to have her. And I know you were happy to have her, so I won't take too long. But thank you all so much.
I think that Gabby, you have a couple of slides if you want to click the little clicker that's there on the podium?
Oh, on the podium? Absolutely, I would. I'm a fast talker and so is Rue. So please scan that QR code. As we mentioned, it is October 14th from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Convention Center. We've got our sponsors down at the bottom. Thank you so much for high school students. And here are some photos from past youth summits. And I have to brag on one of our girls. She drew that little character. And she's created a little mascot for us. Super, super cute. So thank you all so much for having us.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our AP National Scholarships. Our presenter here is Cheryl Pinkston, Advanced Academics and Lot Coordinator. Please, L-O-T-E stands for?
Languages Other Than English. So word languages.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, good evening, Dr. Lee and board members. Every fall, the College Board recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams. And this year, we have 24 students in grades 11 and 12 who have received the title of AP Scholar. So I want to click also to get our slide. Okay. Send us next. There we go. Okay. We have different levels of awards. And so we're going to start with our AP Scholars. We have 14 students who are being recognized. These students have taken three or more AP exams and have scored a three or higher on these three exams. And so we have a list here for you. But in attendance, I'd like to call to the front Kristin Browning. There you go. Luca D'Amico. Samuel Diaz. Jalen Hodge. Angel Jaimez. Michael Pena. Denver Tate. And Olivia Wyret. We also had six students who reached the level of AP Scholar with honor. So they took four or more exams with an average of 3.25. And in attendance with us today is Casey Gonzalez. Kayden Justice. Jimena Gutierrez. Y'all can come on this way. And Jorge Salazar. We also had four students who received AP Scholars with distinctions. This means they've taken five or more AP exams at which they scored at least a 3.5 average. And this evening, we have Parker Barnett in attendance. We are so very proud of the hard work and dedication these students have shown to reach this achievement. But we also want to thank sitting behind them, their families, for instilling a commitment and to you for this continued learning and growing that you're doing. I'm also thankful to be working with the district and with the school board that promotes student success as one of its core values and is ensuring that their future is our focus. And I can't wait to see their future. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all for your hard work. It's awesome accomplishments there. All right, moving along to our open forum. The board welcomes comment from district citizens and employees, individuals or group representatives who have signed up and may speak focusing on public education topics. Please note, the board cannot discuss or act on issues not listed on the agenda. The purpose of open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed in the appropriate time. Speakers will be heard in the order of their request. Open forum is limited to 30 minutes. With each of the two speakers, we allot three minutes per speaker. And our first speaker is Scott Howard. Scott, welcome.
Good evening, members of the school board, educators, and community members. My name is Scott Howard. I have three boys currently in the district, two at the high school and one middle school at Cedar Creek. And I'm here to address two critical issues that undermine strength and integrity in our school district: the exclusion of homeschooled children from sports and extracurricular competitions and the district's mandate to teach to the STAR test. These decisions harm our students, our community, and the values we hold dear. I urge you to reconsider these policies for the sake of our children's future. First, let's talk about the decision to exclude homeschooled children from participating in sports and extracurricular activities. This choice is not just unfair, it's divisive and short-sighted. Homeschooled students are part of our community. Their parents pay taxes, they contribute to the neighborhoods, and they share in our commitment to education. Yet, by barring these students from activities like football, band, the district is sending a message that they don't belong. This exclusion weakens our community's unity and deprives all students of the chance to learn from one another. Now, let me talk, transfer. Turn to an equally troubling issue, the district's mandate to teach to the STAR test. I recently had a conversation with a teacher who revealed her focus for this season is to teach to the STAR test above all else. I followed up to make sure I was understanding her correctly. And she said, yes, indeed, that was her intent and it was at the direction of the district to do so. This approach is a disservice to our children. It's teaching the test prioritizes short-term scores over long-term learning. It reduces education to memorization of answers instead of offering critical thinking, creativity, and a love for learning. I would also point out that having been a member of hiring committees in the professional workplace, it is very easy to identify candidates for positions who have learned the subject matter and those who studied just to pass the certification tests. The last ones don't get hired. So, in the real world, teaching to the test teaches them to fail. In closing, these two issues reflect a broader failure to prioritize what's best for our children and our community. Including homeschooled students in extracurriculars will be a stronger, more united district. And teaching the material, not the test, would give students real education. I implore the board to act swiftly, reverse the exclusionary policy, and redirect our teachers to focus on meaningful education. Our children deserve to be in an education system that lifts them up, not hold them back. Thank you.
Will be Lou Ella Shelton. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Leta Shelton. I am a fifth-year teacher at Cedar Creek High School. This year, teaching Resource English. I come to you tonight not in opposition to serving our students, but in advocacy of doing it right legally, ethically, and with fidelity to the programs and standards that our state and district require and understand. I believe that the state and local procedures and policies are good. I think the cookie crumbles down the hill. Currently, we are being asked to implement a specialized dyslexia program within a resource classroom that serves the majority of students with common IEP goals. And those accommodations are unrelated to the new mandate for dyslexia under House Bill 3928 that passed in 2023. While I support the use of Lexia, which our district is currently using, and I even support the use of this program that they're pulling me out of the classroom to go four days to Austin to train for. I support the idea of a teacher-led instruction for our dyslexia students or other specialized curriculum. However, there's a fidelity statement. For these programs, it requires 45 minutes of instruction for four to five days per week. In my 54 block at the high school, I serve a total of 83 students. Among those students, 78 of the students have common IEP accommodations. Each of these are unique goals. The requirement cannot be met with fidelity of the five dyslexia students assigned in what they're now calling a blended teaching model without sacrificing the accommodations in the minutes of the majority of students. We do not expect general education teachers in inclusion classrooms to meet the needs of special education students without also having a co-teacher support. Yet, in this resource classroom, I am being asked to deliver this dyslexia program that is a specialized designed program above what a special education student is to receive in the resource class. These are two entirely different programs. In this expectation, it sets us up for non-compliance and it sets the students up for failure. And we must ask ourselves, after five years in the district, I'm only concluded to ask, is this truly about education? Or is it about preserving a racial hierarchy in which some are pre-positioned for success while others are not?
The awareness, appreciated. All right. This time, Dr. Lee introduced a new segment in our presentations here.
Yes, I do. I am a...
I am happy to announce a new segment that we're going to be including in our monthly board meeting. It's called Mission Moment. And our goal was to either feature one of our schools, or one of our programs or initiatives, and to allow the people closest to that school or program to come before the board, and our guests, and talk about that. So, we are going to start that night, tonight, with Crystal Gabriel from Bastrop High School. She is the principal at Bastrop High School. And she's going to share a little bit about what they've been doing related to social media engagement. Ms. Gabriel?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you so much for welcoming me this evening to kick off this awesome, awesome opportunity. So, back in May, I had the privilege of speaking at graduation and celebrating the outstanding year that Bastrop High School had. We saw incredible success in our athletics, our CTE, our fine arts program, just every extracurricular that we absolutely had. It was truly remarkable year for our students and for our teachers. At that time, we were still awaiting our STAR scores, and so we had not received them. But since then, I'm even more proud of the academic progress that our students and teachers made. Achieving an overall score of an 86 is absolutely honorable. It reflects the growth and the hard work that both of those people put in. However, while an 86 is good, it's not great. And that is the standard that we want to set at Bastrop High School. This summer, our leadership team came together with one mission, to raise the bar. We asked ourselves, what will it take to not just improve, but to become great? And eventually, elite? Not as a temporary goal, but as the standard at Bastrop High School. So, at Bastrop, that is what we have. We now define the standard as doing everything with purpose, with intentionality, and with pride. This mindset drives every decision that we make academically, operationally, and culturally. One key area of focus this year is marketing and social media presence. In today's world, social media is not optional. It is absolutely essential. It gives us the platform to tell our story, to tell our narrative, so that when someone, so that way someone else does not. Last year alone, over 500,000 people moved to Texas. Those are families that are looking for a place to live, a place to send their child to school. We want them to choose Bastrop, Texas, Bastrop ISD, and especially Bastrop High School. So, to achieve that, it is essential that we market our product, which is our campus, as the high-performing, student-focused, opportunity-rich campus that it truly is. Yes, our football team is absolutely amazing, but so is our ROTC program, our high-achieving academic departments, our innovative CTE pathways, and our vibrant fine arts. It is our responsibility to make sure that every program, every student's success, and every opportunity is visible to the community around. So, to support that goal, we developed a structured social media marketing plan that was aligned to our standard. Mondays, we highlight athletics. Wednesdays, features extracurricular programs. And Friday, we showcase academics and classroom learning. These posts follow intentional branding guidelines to ensure consistency, clarity, and quality. In between, we also calendar out special events, student and staff spotlights, and key campus updates. Ms. Stevenson, our campus communications liaison, along with her student journalism team, helped track and manage this content. Their work ensures that we are telling the complete story of Bastrop High School, one of growth, of excellence, and of opportunity. Our recent social media efforts has generated strong results that clearly show that we are increasing community engagement and awareness of our programs. In the past month, we have had over 130,000 views, with more than half coming from non-followers. This shows our content is reaching beyond our existing audience and drawing in new viewers. Our posts reach 18,500 people, with this majority of them also being non-followers. This indicates that our content is spreading widely and helping grow our visibility to the community. We've had nearly 3,000 interactions last month, including likes, shares, and comments. Engagement from non-followers on this grew by over 570%. We also have gained 125 new followers alone on Facebook. During this period, a healthy sign showing that people want to stay connected to our campus and all the great things that are taking place on it. We will continue to track these analytics and make adjustments to our postings if needed to ensure that we are marketing our product for the most effective way to reach the most people that we possibly can. In addition to our social media platform, as part of our comprehensive marketing strategy, we're also leveraging the most high-traffic and high-energy events in Bastrop, our football games. Beginning this season, within the next couple of games, we'll be featuring our Two Minute Drill. This is a video segment that our AV students and program is creating to show the engaging highlights of our achievements and activities that are currently taking place on our campus or future events that will be taking place. This initiative not only enhances school spirit and community engagement, but also strengthens public awareness of the value our high school delivers. We believe that consistent in-person promotion of our programs, as well as our social media platform, will play a key role in building long-term support for future campus and district initiatives. Thank you so much for your support. We are so proud of everything that we have accomplished, but even more excited of what we're going to accomplish this year as we continue to grow and to become great and even more elite. Thank you. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Gabriel, thank you for your leadership and your team's dedication and enthusiasm, and it's exciting.
It is exciting.
Look forward to seeing more of this information.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, this time, we'll move into our superintendent's report. Dr. Lee?
Yes, thank you. So, last month, I started giving just a verbal report, just an update for our community, those people who are watching online maybe right now, or who will watch this meeting at a later time, as well as those of you who are here, and of course, for our board. Our board is already so well-informed that this really is more for the community. So, I wanted to do that again tonight. So far, in my time as interim superintendent, I have met with every single department in the district and am about halfway through spending time in our schools and meeting with the faculties and getting input from them. And it has really been, it's been incredible, just listening, trying to learn what I can about what staff is facing, what they love, what they appreciate about the district, and some things that we need to work on. So, I wanted to just share highlights from the department meetings. These are not, this is not feedback from the schools yet, so I'll do that in October. Some common themes. Our employees feel very proud to work in Bastrop ISD. They commented on the sense of family and teamwork between them and their colleagues, and they really appreciate that. They also appreciate the visibility of leadership being in and around the schools and seeing them at community events as well. They are proud of programs like Circa. They're happy that we have brought MTSS back into our elementary schools. We're still working on hiring some MTSS coaches, so please send us one if you know. They are happy and then proud about the investments that we've made in the last several years in all of our facilities, providing that great environment for our students and our staff. But we also talked about some challenges. I heard staff talk about the workload and the staffing shortages that, not just teacher shortages, but throughout the organizations. Nurses being stretched thin, APs having to navigate discipline issues, and so much paperwork that comes with that. Special education staff managing heavy caseloads. Our IT staff handling growth-related demands that come from, you know, additional schools that we've brought online and additional staff throughout the district. Even our housekeeping staff commented about just sometimes needing a little bit of extra staff to help them. We've added, you know, another 90,000, 100,000 square feet of facilities, and we'll be adding more. So, our people in general are doing more with less. And competition and retention just remain pressing issues for us as the districts around us are also experiencing shortages and wanting to do things to recruit our own people away from us. And we can't let that happen. Communication was also a recurring theme. Several departments commented that it's not as if they're not getting enough information, but that when information is delayed or it's unclear, it places additional burdens on staff, and it can undermine their ability to serve their students and families well. And I want to be clear that I'm not talking about the communication department. It's really just the communication among us, here at the district office, and how that filters down to the campuses. And I think that we have some improvements that we can make in that regard. And finally, quite a few staff asked us to keep mental health as an important priority, not only for students, but also for staff. So, we need to do that. So, what I heard loud and clear is that Bastrop ISD is a great place to work. We are full of people with tremendous heart, who are here for our students. We're here for each other, and that is an amazing thing. And so, now we have to make sure that the spirit of BISD is matched with resources and systems and processes that really make us run like a well-oiled machine, because we have all the bones to do it. So, I will be on the lookout for another message coming out to all staff and families on Monday, and we'll talk a little bit more about this. So, thank you for the opportunity to share that report.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. All right, moving along here to our financial report, our presentation and public hearing on the 2025-2026 proposed tax rate, as well as considered adoption of the board resolution to set the 2025-2026 tax rate. Our presenter with us this evening is Mike White, our chief financial officer. Welcome.
Well, so, I'm excited to share that tonight is the culmination of really about six months of conversations we've had, going back to the spring. Budget workshops and proposed budgets. Last month, we came back to you with an early look at what we're going to propose tonight with the tax rate. Of course, those things are intertwined and very symbiotic. So, tonight is the final step, the adoption of the MNO and INS tax rate. I'm not going to give the full presentation as last month. I didn't want to, I really wanted to highlight a few key areas, and this was one slide I really liked. Since House Bill 3, with the compression from $1.04 now down to 66.69 cents, I wanted to give a little perspective there, as well as the consistency with our debt service tax rate, that 40.1 cents that we've adopted and maintained going back at least 1018. You'll see here, not burying the lead, the proposed rate is the exact same as last month. Right, so, very straightforward. It breaks down a little bit like this, and you can see that both columns are the same. So, the explanation, the same for both. TA calculates the first number for us, right? There's zero latitude there. Second number, the golden pennies, were pennies that we had had in our tax rate historically, with a maximum of eight pennies there. So, that's when you start going beyond that, you start talking about a VATRE, a tax rate election, those kind of things. We're not in that situation. We have the five cents there. That gets us to the 66.69 rate there for MNO. The INS, still 40.01 cents. We talked about, had a refunding this past December. Had our August new money sale, the last of the 2023 bonds were sold, about $90 million. Came to you for last month. So, going to maintain that rate, use a little bit of that fund balance to maintain some tax rate consistency. So, tonight, we're coming to you to adopt a rate of 106.79. One of the things that's very unique, and I want to explain a little before we have our possible motion and show the ordinance here, the resolution. Truth in taxation, the Texas Comptroller has very prescribed language. Some statements have to be made, certain calculations, certain rates exceed certain calculations. You recall that in House Bill 2, we got an influx of funding, right? That was a good day for public education. So, they basically say, if we're going to set a rate that, you know, raises more money, and obviously, you know, we're getting millions of dollars from House Bill 2, we have to make the second statement there that we're going to effectively raise our rate. So, in essence, to get the same amount of funding as last year, we'd have to cut our tax rate. All of that, that would be catastrophic. Nobody is doing that. So, in essence, because the delta there is the effective increase of the tax rate. So, I did check, I said, based on House Bill 2, everybody's going to have to adopt this statement, right? I mean, unless you're going to not give teacher raises and go through significant cuts. So, this is, again, a prescribed statement that we have to include in the motion and in the resolution. So, that's the only thing that's different. Wanted to explain that before we had to possibly...
Can you explain, I guess, two things? One is that compression tax rate, don't go too deep, but just...
Okay.
And I'm not even asking about the golden pennies, but if you could do the compression tax rate. And then also, you know, we hear all this tax revenues coming into the district. Can you explain that it doesn't all stay in the district?
Yes, and those are two very related questions. Let's back up a little bit here. Start here. So, really high level, in the 2018 session, really going back, there was a previous compressed tax rate. Tax rates used to be over $1.50, if you recall. At one point, they compressed it to a dollar, right? And they bought down the tax rate, you know, for taxpayer relief. So, the last 20 years, a common theme politically in the state of Texas is concern about the burden of taxpayers, particularly for public schools. And as a result of that, they've taken action several times, primarily in 2006 and 2018, to buy down the tax rate. So, they tell local schools, you compress your tax rate, you know, let's just say that's almost 40 cents over the years, we're going to make up the difference. So, they've been flush with funding. If they were to make us lower our rate and not make us whole, it'd be a significant, it would be catastrophic for funding.
That meaning the state?
The state, yes.
Okay. And when you say compress, you're saying decrease it?
Yes, compression meaning reduce, yeah. So, they're buying down our tax rate, funding it, give taxpayers some relief, right? But the interesting thing is, for us, if they were to reduce our, compress our tax rate, we may not necessarily get any additional funding. If we don't grow, we're funded based on the number of kids that come to the school. And we've been a growing district, so that's been favorable for us, allowed us to open schools and whatnot. But, so, some of these truth in taxation requirements are a little tricky, because they don't really recognize that our taxes may go up, taxpayers' bills may go up, but local schools may not get any additional funding, right? It's like, there's a popular analogy of like filling up a bucket or a glass, right? Your glass is defined by how many kids are there, right? Taxpayers make up a certain portion, the state fills up the rest of the glass. So, those two things kind of move hand in hand, right? One goes up, the other goes down typically. So, as we're going, in this case, this year, it doesn't apply. Our tax rate's the same, we didn't grow that much. But if you're a fast-growth district, your rate may go down, and the state may be making up the difference for you. So, everybody's formula is now different as a result. You couldn't look at our formula, between those things, and compare it to Elgin's or Hayner's. So, that seems to be a common theme. And we're going to, in November, if taxpayers approve, we're going to have the Homestead impression as well, something else they're going to fund. So, some of our budget may change a little there, the taxes may go down, state revenue would go up. So, makes it a little challenging to do these kind of things in a changing landscape, but that's a very complex topic whittled down as quick as I could do it.
Thank you.
Did I answer your second question, or less?
Yes.
Okay.
The cup and...
Okay. As long as I did, I'm long-winded. I forgot your question, so, that was good questions.
Any other questions from the board during this public hearing? All right, at this time, we'll open it up to the audience. Please note, if you do have a question, please come to the podium so the folks online can hear your question. hear your question. Do we have any questions from the audience?
Seeing our public hearing?
Yes. Any more to present on our public hearing? All right, no more questions. This will conclude our public hearing. Thank you.
Sure.
At this time, we will consider adoption of the board resolution to set the 2025-2026 tax rate. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.0679, which is effectively an 8.8% increase in the tax rate as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. White. We appreciate it. All right, our curriculum report, as well as our human resource report, and our police department report, and facilities and support services report are all for informational only. This moves us into our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull or discuss any of the consent agenda items as presented? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving us along to our action items. Consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Bastrop County Juvenile Boot Camp of Bastrop County and Bastrop ISD. Presenter, Dr. Janelle Morris, Director of Student Services. Welcome, Ms. Morris.
Dr. Lee and trustees presenting for you this evening a consideration of a memorandum of understanding with Bastrop County Juvenile Boot Camp or BCJBC to provide, to continue providing educational services for Bastrop ISD students who have been expelled from the district. We are in this partnership with the county of Bastrop, the city of Bastrop, the city of Smithville, Elgin ISD, McDade ISD, and Smithville ISD. And this MOU is a proposed renewal of our partnership with this program, which was originally established in 1999 to serve the youth of Bastrop County. When students are enrolled in the BCJBC, they engage in a recovery program that includes continued educational opportunities to support their academic progress with a certified teacher. They have opportunities to learn trade skills, self-discipline, and organizational strategy, as well as citizenship and self-reflective practices. This is with the intent to support leading to successful re-entry into their home district, decreased recidivism, and post-secondary readiness. Last year, 93% of our students completed this program successfully, and we're six times less likely to engage in similar. And the key change in the MOU for this year is that the advisory board has granted Bastrop ISD an additional voting representation seat based on our financial contribution to this program. I'm happy to entertain questions.
Are typically enrolled in this program?
Sure. Last year, we had a total of 16, which is less than half of 1% of our students.
And you said financial contribution. What is our financial contribution?
I will get with our CFO, who is also on the advisory board, and we can send that information to you.
I'll get that for you. I don't have it off your head.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, is Sergeant Jackson still over there?
Yes.
Yeah. If you've never toured the place, it's fascinating, so I encourage all board members to do it if you haven't.
Where is it?
Out on 95, far, far away.
Like near the animal shelter?
Yes, right next to it.
Who else is on the advisory other than Mike?
We have a representative from each of the cities and districts that I just listed.
Any other questions for Dr. Morris? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Bastrop County Juvenile Boot Camp of Bastrop County and Bastrop ISD as presented.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Morris. All right, moving along to information items, which are board trustees, calendar events, as well as enrollment, single budget purchases more than 50,000, as well as a nomination resolution for the board of directors for the Bastrop Central appraisal district CAD are all for information items only, which moves us into our closed session. It is now 6:24 PM, and the board will now convene in the closed meeting session to discuss the following items as allowed by Texas Government Code 551.071 Attorney Consultation and 551.074 Personnel Matters and 551.072 Real Property. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. Thank you.
All right, the time is now 7:44 PM and the board will now reconvene in open session. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the agreement for replacement site and removal of encumbrances with the property described as a 189.167 acre tract in the Jose Antonio Navarro survey in Bastrop County.
Second.
We have a motion as second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none, meeting adjourned. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.